Hey, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, October 22nd, 2025. It's 9:04 a.m. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board, to my left Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Caroline Mejia, Commissioner Rachel Grant, and Commissioner Emily Klaus on Zoom. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez. This is County Manager Jennifer Walker and Joshua Cummings. The meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the Thurston County YouTube channel within 24 hours. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and distributed to the Board of County Commissioners. Action may be taken at this meeting. First up this morning is Experience Olympia and Beyond 2025 Midyear Budget Adjustment and 2026 Budget Update.
Yep, thank you so much Chair. We have our Experience Olympia and Beyond app on to the table. You can introduce yourself. It'd be great if you sat in the middle. That way you can effectively use the... ...the slide to do your 30-minute presentation.
We're doing our best. Good morning Commissioners and staff. I'm Kelly Campbell with Experience Olympia and Beyond. First, I'd like to thank you all for your investment in our partnership as we seek new leadership, work to rebuild trust and strengthen our relationship. We greatly appreciate the support and commitment of Commissioner Fornier and County Manager Hernandez at our Board of Directors meeting yesterday afternoon. Both myself and Emily Brooks will be presenting to you today, and thank you for the opportunity to share our mid-year budget adjustment for 2025 and our proposed budget for 2026, as well as marketing updates we have been working on for the remainder of 2025. On this first slide to your left, you'll see our 2025 budget as approved in August of 2024, and on the right is the revised and adjusted budget based on actuals for your review. Each city's LTAC award varies annually. The timing of funding applications in our budget cycle impact this. We include estimates in our proposed budget and allow for adjustment based on actual awards received. The following slides will provide context as we... as to what each line item includes and perspectives on changes. Slide three is the LTAC funds. Those are by cities. Lacey awarded $100,000, Tumwater $4325, Olympia $168,635, and Yelm $4,000. We did not apply for funds from the county LTAC last year for 2025. Private funds is advertising, income and sponsorship, event income, and that's in kind along with sponsorship tourism. TPA, this year's forecasted receipts are 834,1475. We receive these funds with three-month lag. Funds paid by visitors for a $2 per night assessment to their room stay are collected by hotels, for example, in July, reported to the Department of Revenue in August, and received by the county or fiduciary agent. I... excuse me. Passed. Yep. In September, and deposited into EOB account in October. Hotel assessments vary by overnight stays, reporting, and when funds are paid. For grant income, in this slide, available for visitor guide research through our State of Washington Tourism Grant and Department of Commerce. We applied and received for these funds, and our staff are in the process of reviewing the results of the data we received just last week. We will finalize our reporting before year-end. We take advantage of each opportunity that comes available to our attention, that we qualify for, and always aim to be good stewards of the funds we receive. We make them work to the advantage... to our advantage and stretch each dollar and... each and every dollar that comes our way as if it is our own. As an organization, we want every business in our region that we work with to promote... to be promoted and benefit and grow, and share our community with the full spectrum of offerings with visitors from 50-plus miles away, while enhancing residents and businesses through the economic impact of new money from outside our county. This slide is our investment estimated income. As part of our accreditation process through association with Destinations International, we keep a minimum of six months' reserves on hand and invest those funds to maximize our return. This slide is our marketing and communications budget, broken down. Kind of, I'll just read through it. Continue research-based marketing strategy, executing on deliverables approved in the 2025 marketing plan. Intelligence-based targeted advertising, which is media attribution. Sharing market intelligence with jurisdictional partners and industry stakeholders. Content and partner listings on Experience Olympia and Beyond website. Leverage in public relations and social media efforts for earned media, and we use the visitor and community guides, as well as the byway guide. And that's broken down into advertising, public relations, community relations, products, which is our visitor guides and byway guides, as well as our website, including search engine optimization, photography, and videography, memberships, and research. Whoops. Whoa. Oh, my God. Never mind. Forget about that. Okay, for sales, this is just a breakdown of a portion of our expenses in this category. We continue to the transition of our sales activities to better align with our changing market and available resources. We are investing in products and event sponsorships with the highest likelihood of ROI and bookings for our local venues. We hosted the USA National Touch Rugby at the Rack in August. We also had USSA, which is U-S-A softball, in July, which brings about 1,700 or 1,800 hotel rooms or night stays, and One West Tourism Alliance Destination Summit in September at Great Wolf Lodge. For personnel, some examples... Oops. Yeah, I missed... I think I missed something here. I apologize. Let's see. As you can see, the slide of our team is small but mighty, and we are currently operating with reduced staff. Over the years, we have worked to create a competitive benefit package that helps attract qualified candidates and wants to appear to keep them. This budget has a significant reduction in personnel expenses due to staffing changes. The CEA Search and Sports and Sales Coordinator position being vacant since March, and those portions have shifted to operations. Operations expenses increased due to consultancies we had here, shifting from personnel late in 2024 and after our budget was approved. We employ tools that are captured in this operations category that keep our staff on track with our data and safely stored in the cloud. TPA administration, this is the cost for... that are passed on to us by the county for administering the accounting of the funds received through TPA, as well as insurance coverage for our sponsors. Reviews, this is a review of the proposed budget and approved budget for 2025 back in last August 2024, and then the proposed and approved budget by our Board of Directors and the TPA this August. Slight differences. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. No? Onto 2026. In 2026, our proposed budget is similar, but with slight changes that I'll share as we move through these slides. The LTAC is in a three-year multi... third year of our multi-year contract. We just learned last week that our awards for both Yelm and Tumwater are slightly higher than what's predicted here based on our approved budget, and we're grateful for that extra funds, those extra funds. On the other... excuse me. On the other side, we have recently learned where cuts will need to be made to funding, and each adjustment will be considered as we make spending decisions. So this is for our private fund section. TPA, our TPA estimates are based on forecasting and trends, and we'll continue to monitor and adjust accordingly. A noticeable difference for 2026 is a lack of grant funding. We didn't account for any. This is not to say that we won't have any, just that our main source of opportunity is the State of Washington Tourism. And their budget has been slashed from the current biennial budget from $9 million to $3 million, and they will not be administering any grants. However, if an opportunity arises, we will investigate and apply if it fits with our work plan and would be beneficial to all. Interest, a noticeable... excuse me. Estimated income from our investments through August 2025, we have burned about $23,000 with current interest rates. However, those are changing and trending lower, so we feel this number of $25,000 for 2026 is achievable and will adjust if necessary next year. This is similar to the marketing and communications budget for 2025. We'll continue our research-based marketing strategy, executing on deliverables approved in 2026 business and marketing plan. Continue intelligence-based marketing through media attribution. Continue sharing market intelligence with jurisdictional partners and industry stakeholders, and that is a huge benefit to those communities and their... it's well-received information. Continue to build out our content and partner listings on experienceolympia.com. Continue to leverage public relations and social media efforts for earned media in key markets, as well as facilitating local public relations and destination education. Let's see. Let's see. I lost my place here. So sorry. This one is advertising, and we'll continue with seasonal campaign-based digital marketing, display advertising and tracking of the media attribution through targeted placements, pixeling, and geo-fencing, utilizing the print and digital publications based on highest profile opportunities and return on investment. These targeted regional placements and opportunities are very beneficial. Continue to grow our social media audience and engagement through strategically placed campaigns. Next, the public relations and for community and external public relations. As you'll see here on this slide, the seasonal story pitches that Emily works on for the region, press releases and media alerts, coordination of social media influencer and press trips to secure earned media coverage, and earned media is free coverage based on our relationship with those journalists and writers. Quarterly tourism industry updates. We plan to share those in 2026. It's an education-based opportunity for businesses and attractions locally. Community relations, ongoing community and industry outreach, 2026 Annual Meeting and Sports Awards, and continue with stakeholder and resident sentiment surveying. Let's see. As you can see here, each of our nine cities and towns in Thurston County have their own distinctive guide that features highlights of their respective communities. We develop these guides alongside city staff in addition to creation of a brand-style guide for each and a dedicated page on our website to showcase what each city wants to promote and has to offer visitors. This promotional work stemmed from feedback received after the name change of our organization several years ago, and will boost... and serves to boost each city and town's recognition. Distribution varies for each. The visitor guide is placed throughout the state and key areas, and all guides are available digitally on our website by US Mail and by email request. They are also distributed at various locations throughout our county, as well as in each city hall. Let's see. Website traffic. Our website and product development is similar to previous years. It's highly trafficked and serves as a visitor resource. As you can see, we invest in photography and videography to constantly update and improve our visitor experience. We spend a chunk of search engine organization on... on search engine organization to ensure we are always top on the Google search, which is content that we know visitors are searching for. Industry and memberships. We follow the industry best practices, working alongside our fellow DMOs throughout the state to collaborate on special projects like FIFA and attract association business when possible. Research. This is expensive. We employ these tools to give our marketing dollars the best opportunity to attract visitors from our fly and drive markets based on media attribution data and use the reporting like Smith Travel Research to see trends. AirDNA is back in the budget for 2026 and informs us on economic impact on our short-term rentals in our community. Sales. We continue the transition of our sales activities to better align with our changing market and available venue spaces and resources. We are investing in products and event sponsorships with the highest likelihood of return on investment and bookings for local venues. We are investing in these sales initiatives that also... we also know are bringing proven economic impact to the destination. For sports events and sponsorships and bid fees, this is a large portion of our... of our sales budget. We work with sports and association groups and have our fee process to send out leads to interested parties, offering coordination and incentives to encourage event planners and tournament organizers to choose Thurston County as their destination. And as you can see here, many... some of you may have heard, but we did just secure American Junior Golf Association. They're coming starting in August of 2026, and they'll be hosting their tournament at Tumwater Valley Golf Course for '26, '27, and '28. Here are the remaining budget for sales category. We're hosting fam tours and clients who show interest in hosting events in Thurston County. We pitch venues and seasonal activities that attract media and event planners and host field trips to highlight unique venue spaces for niche events that cater to our offerings here in Thurston County. Back to personnel. It's similar to 2025. We have two team members hopefully joining us soon to further expand our capacity and share the workload as we promote the businesses and areas of attraction that make Thurston County an exceptional place to visit. We do have a 3% COLA in our budget for 2026, and we do... and I'm having a couple staff. For operations, this category went down slightly as we've adjusted some of the expenses that we had for recruiting in our... for our leadership position. Those expenses were paid in 2025 and will not... there will not be additional expenses in 2026 as we continue to search. Our operations budget, let's see. I think we just said that. Sorry about that. I get ahead of myself here. So basically, we... we... one additional thing I'll share here is that we continue to offer development opportunities that keep our program ahead of the curve and in touch with latest industry trends, training, and essential industry networks. TPA administration is similar to 2025. We have recurring contract services with the county, insurance, and things of that nature. For 2023, excuse me, 2026, you'll see the approved budget that's adjusted that we just showed you from 2025 and the draft budget proposed for 2026. This is for your approval, and if I'm happy to answer any questions on either the '26 or the 2025 that I just presented. Questions? Okay, well, I'll pass them on to Emily. It is Commissioner Mark.
Yeah, so I'm... As you all know, tourism is important to all of us here. We get to showcase the incredible destination that we call home, and it brings in new money to the area. That money doesn't just stay within hotels. It goes over many different attractions, restaurants, and it supports the work that locals value most here, which is our quality-of-life sense of place and the central community services that... and jobs that keep Thurston County vibrant. I wanted to share a few high-level data points with you all. So on the left over here, you'll see that 41.2% of visitors stayed overnight in Thurston County, and when compared to the total economic impact on the right, overnight visitors made up 70.7% of all spending in our destination. That just shows the impact that tourism has on our community. In our sentiment survey that we conducted this last summer, we do this every year. We asked our visitors what type of attractions they experienced during their last visit. Dining was at the top, which I don't blame any of them. Shopping next, scenic beauty, and then the waterfront. We then also asked them what their most effective travel inspiration resources were, what they turned to when they're looking of a new destination to come to. So websites found via search engine, Google, was at the top of the list. Then the official local and state visitor guides, online content next, and then emails. Those were the top four, and those are the top four resources that are really built into our marketing strategy as we know that those are how people are wanting to do. The one thing I want to mention on websites found via search engine also, that includes AI overviews and ChatGPT within there. These large language models are taking over, but our website continues just to be an authoritative resource and always comes up in those LLMs. Here, I want to show you some of our work. These are all designed to be seen 50-plus miles away, so they're not designed to be seen locally. This is the media attribution that Kelly was mentioning. For every dollar that we spend, we see roughly $238 back in visitor spending within Thurston County. It is very targeted advertising, and once we see that they click an ad, they see they're pixeled and tracked, and we can then target them again with a different messaging to come further down the marketing funnel. I want to mention really quickly that we also this year did a byway, Thurston-Bountiful byway-specific digital advertising, and it saw really good results so far. Here are just a couple of things that we've been working on and are excited to share for 2025 and going into 2026. So the Port of Seattle had a grant opportunity. It was in collaboration with them for a advertisement in the Sea-Tac Airport. So that was just installed October 1st. It's at the D2 gate if anyone's going to be there. I will be there on Saturday, and I'm going to take a picture with them. You will see it next time, I promise. So it is the "You Belong Here," which is one of our main campaigns that we do. We have winter and holiday digital advertising, which you saw an example of that on the previous slide that's being served to those in our drive markets specifically, which are Seattle, Portland, and then over into the east side as well. We have a Portland monthly advertising buy. We're really targeting the Portland audience. Just with them being a little bit further south, they're more likely to stay overnight. So we did a advertising buy with them for the rest of 2025, and that's a combination of an article that will be coming out hopefully this week, newsletter, and then banner ads on their website as well, so targeting people in different ways. As Kelly mentioned, we have the visitor guide study. We are digging into that right now. So in 2026, 2027 visitor guide, you'll likely see some changes in there based on these research that was done through the grant with SWT. And then, as Kelly mentioned also, you're stealing my thunder. AJGA three-year commitment is coming this summer at Tumwater Valley Golf Course. And then in September, we filmed a PBS segment for Washington Groan. Commissioner Fornier was our spokesperson. It was down in Tonino, and then also we went up to Tumwater to Rutledge, and that will be airing in February or March, they tell me, Q1 of 2026.
Exciting. It's exciting.
Yeah, it should be great. And that was all. We tried to make it quick for you all. Happy to answer any questions.
Coming out. Appreciate the updates. Quick questions. How do you guys anticipate being able to assist with the FIFA Fan Zone project? That's just starting to get moving.
Yeah.
That's a great question, Chair, because we were at the meeting, the board workers. Yeah. And we're going to today tie them in a little bit closer with David and Jim in the chamber. But I don't want to take away the update that you have about working activity.
And so as I shared with County Manager and Commissioner Fornier yesterday, we have a monthly meeting just with other DMOs for just kind of the destination marketing part of it, of what everyone's doing. I know that next month at that meeting, they're bringing in like Expedia, for example, because Expedia wants to do a co-op with all of the destinations that are going to be fan zones to... for us all to kind of learn more about that. So part of our digital programmatic media attribution budget will be going towards targeting those specifically coming here for FIFA. So once we know what that draw looks like, targeting visitors who are in soccer-minded, people are kind of calling it, cities, and then also targeting once people are actually in Seattle and trying to bring them down south. So we'll be creating a lot of different POIs, Points of Interest, and GeoFences to capture people within those areas. So that's just kind of one aspect of it, but as County Manager said, we are happy to be involved, and we all kind of know different information at different times.
And I think there was a... You can also weigh in if you want to, but assuming there's a large agreement among the group to tie in that you look closer on this project.
And we've been meeting with other DMOs since February when the announcement was made or January. So we're... we're happy to help. We just... we just feel like our best space is in the marketing of the destination. So.
Okay, anything else for these guys? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, next up is an executive session pursuant to RCW 4231101I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency governing body or member acting in official capacity is or is likely to become a party. Public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequence. 20 minutes, County Manager, is that still accurate?
It is. You might want to start with 15, and then we can extend for five more if we need to.
It's 9:30. We'll be in the executive session until 9:45. We'll extend that if needed. Board action may follow. So thanks, everybody, for being a part of that, and we'll bring you back in when we're ready. All right, 9:54 a.m. We're out of executive session under item two. Direction was given, but no legislative actions being taken. So we're going to move on to item three, which is the major item for this morning. Preliminary 26, 27, biennial budget development, final preliminary review. I guess I'll turn it to County Manager.
Thanks so much, Chair. As is our commitment to the board, we wanted just to start before we jump into the presentation with a couple of budget updates as we've been working and looking at the numbers. And as we've said, that if there's any changes or potential upside or opportunities, that we'd bring those to the commissioners as soon as we found them. And so there's two items. One item is the non... in the non-departmental. It was last week. We had a great conversation when we went over the items in non-departmental. Staff took really great notes. Over the last couple of days, we were able to connect those notes with the actual decisions, and we have come to understand that based on the target that was provided for non-departmental, we're calling it now county...
Light Services.
Light Services, that there is about a 450 over the target that could be used to the... by the board to plug other offices potentially. And then the other item that we've looked at over the last couple of days is on the TC Connect. We currently have $3 million programmed out for the comprehensive TC Connect fix. Some of the... for the biennial for two years. Some of that being ongoing and some of it being one-time costs. In light of this being a really strained fiscal time, we would like to propose to the board that we do a $2 million, which would... which would create a $500,000 savings for '26 and '27 that could also be used.
It's currently 2.5 plus five maybe next year. So the suggestion would be clawback $500,000 out of that 2.5?
There's a total of $3 million for the two years, and we're suggesting that we take $500,000 each year, '26, '27, for a total of $1 million, to reduce that down to $2 million, which if you add that, plus the 450, gives about $950 that the board could look to address other offices or departments that have... are experiencing reductions.
You'd said some of that was ongoing funding, some of that was one-time funding. Is it... is there a way to like...
Break that out?
Break that out, yeah.
Yeah, I recommend... I mean, it ought to... Our recommendation would be that $500,000 of it remains ongoing, and that 1.5 is at one time. But I want to reserve a little bit of flexibility for the TC Connect Steering Committee to finish the conversations with Baker Tilly about what that breakout's going to look like. Once they have that work done, we would come to the board and brief them on what we can accomplish in two years with the $2 million.
The bottom line, if I understand, of those two items is that we would have $950,000 that the board could apply to Superior Court, Clerk, Juvenile Court.
Yes, sir.
So if the board would like to do that, I would strongly recommend that we do that, Commissioner Fornier.
So of that, you're saying of that $2 million, why specifically $950,000?
Because there's $450,000 from just departmental, based on previous decisions that we made. So I'm... correct me if I've got this wrong, County Manager, and then we're going to shave out $500,000 from the... from the amount that we had set for TC Connect. And that gives us... and that gives us, as I understand it, $950,000 that could... of ongoing funds that could be applied toward the cuts that were proposed to the court.
Yes.
And then we would... Well, towards anything. I'm suggesting court, but it could be... somebody can make an alternate.
And then we would come back in 2027 and look how much of that $2 million accomplished for TC Connect and potentially ask for additional funding. But $2 million, we believe, would get us significant... But two million dollars, we believe, would get us significant system enhancements and go a long way in improving what we have. It's not the full request that staff believe we need, but in considering the current fiscal times, we could readdress that uh uh at the end of twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, I mean, becau, for me, like, because the courts, the courts' functions and are, are, we, we know what that, we know what that is, because they're doing them, right? Versus the TC Connect, which is, we're, we're still figuring out. I mean, we know that it's been significant. So I'm, I, I really rather have this kind of approach where we, we figure out, you know, we don't, we take a conservative approach in a way, or you could call it the non-conservative approach toward the TC Connect. I mean, I, I, I think I'm comfortable with that.
So we made a motion yesterday to ask the justice partners to convene and figure out how to level set some of the, the cuts that they'd made so that they can be more functionally, more holistic functionally. Why not, if we've got money to throw in, throw in that, that into their decision-making and let them decide where the best place to put it would be? Because like yesterday, we made a big argument that we are not the experts on that. So I wouldn't want to come in today and then presum, be presumptive and be like, well, we know what's best. I mean, they're gonna convene on Monday, or we've asked them to convene on Monday. Now we've got a little more incentive to, to offer them to convene and come up with solutions. It might be a suggestion, but then I also want to recognize that we also made a motion to cut COLAs for non, uh, non-represented employees. So if there is some al, awesome, some other funds to consider, I want, I'd love to have the discussion to uh whether or not we could restore those uh, those COLA cuts.
Other thoughts?
For the nine fifty um available, well, first, I, I guess I just want to thank staff for um really going above and turning every rock. And I know that this puts a lot of strain for the TC Connect. Um, and then, um, you know, for that four fifty for non-departmental, I think it's very important. So thank you. Um. I will say, like, we've been hearing from, from the courts, and so I'm also leaning towards kind of um kind of that piece. Um, I did uh speak with uh Judge Skender yesterday, and um part of that conversation was there are some vacancies in juvenile court. Uh, they have uh requested that while they can unfund those positions, right, that they are not eliminated. Um. Just in case there is an increase in juvenile caseload, um, they are able to come in front of the board and request those positions back. Um, and so there was a suggestion of an MOU. I'm, I'm looking towards Summer and, and staff um, because that would be around um nine, another, an additional nine hundred and fifty to a million, right? That would kind of take away that, that strain that, you know, juvenile court would be putting forward for their own cuts. And so is there a way that we can achieve that? Is there, you know, is it through an MOU or proviso? What is the best way?
We can add the language to the proviso, which is an attachment to one of the budget resolutions that you would adopt uh formally on December sixteenth. So yes, we can do that.
And keeping positions on the books but not funded is not our normal practice. Um, it does create um some fracking and statutory complications. However, uh considering the environment that we're in, um, we are willing to look at this for a two-year window, knowing that it's a very uncertain time that we are still waiting to hear back from the state on potential funding for the public defense caseloads, that the board will be entering into a conversation uh early next month about what's the strategy for growing back the budget if funding comes through that we, that you've discussed. So in that environment, uh, we believe that we could work with HR. It's gonna create a workload there, work with the budget team, um, create workload there. But adding that to the proviso for um juvenile and Superior Court, something that um, as Summer mentioned, could be done.
I would support that. I know that we, like, it's, it was previously, you know, the policy of the county, no unfunded positions, Robin Campbell used to constantly repeat that uh for the
I can feel that right here.
Yeah, I feel it. I'm hearing it right now. Um, but, but we've discussed, in terms of brainstorming about the Grow Back Plan and what that would look like, this has been, uh, this has been discussed, at least, at least with the County Manager and myself, but just as an, in, as a, and maybe with the board, I can't remember, as a possible element. And I had said that Superior Court would be top of my priority list for that Grow Back Plan. So this makes sense to me in terms of fitting with conversations we've had and a deviation we can make to try to show that commitment and um make things simpler. Um, like I say, for all the uncertainties that we're facing.
I was never getting yelled at by Robin.
They say, so it doesn't matter to me.
Doesn't matter to you.
Um, so, okay, so I guess the question, though, uh, cause, cause you know, we could, we could apply those funds to whatever we, we want, or Commissioner Fornier's idea is interesting. Kind of how, how would this fit with the previous discussion yesterday and having the groups convene? Um, is giving that, putting that money to that group for discussion, you know, the right thing. Uh, you know, I thought about within the Superior Court Department, the three that they were, that they're discussing together, like, you know, as an, you know, I see where you're coming from, because I was sort of thinking about, you know, like, I don't want to be feeling like I know how to exactly allocate that money.
I'll support either type of restoration of funds, whatever we, whatever the majority comes with. But we spent a great length yesterday debating
Right.
that we don't know best, and we asked that our justice partners get together and convene and figure out how to level set and, and, and look at it holistically. So like, I, I, I believe in that approach, and I, I'll commit to that if uh, to me, that's, that's still front of mind.
I think that what I would say um ultimately, it's the board's call. My perspective would be, we know that the board has been discussing um the importance of Superior, juvenile, and or functions. It would be good for the interest of time if the board gave them a starting point. And then if that group still wanted to come together and make some switches, they could. But direction from the board would be good so that they would know that what the intent is and how that's gonna change their ultimate targets. Um, all the offices and departments are doing a lot of work right now, and they're working in partnership with Budget Office. So from an administration standpoint, I think it would be good some kind of s, some kind of signal from the board of this is how you'd want to see the
Right, so I'm gonna, and I'm gonna take the cue of the County Manager, I'm gonna throw numbers, and then we can discuss it. I would say four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Superior Court, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each to the Clerk and Juvenile Court. That equals four fifty. That takes into account what Commissioner Mejia said about the vacancy issue. And there are also vacancies within the Clerk's office, too. So with that, as a something throwing out there, is there a discussion about that?
A motion?
Well, no, not yet. I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear feedback from the board. Commissioner Mejia.
Thank you, Chair. Um, um. I would say, I would, I would prefer, yeah, this approach in, in terms of setting the numbers right now, because if the criminal justice partners want to get together, right, like, it's something that, you know, they can talk about if, if they want to shift around, but getting them to that point, I think it's appropriate, especially as um have a motion today, too. So I would rather that just be included in. Um, so what I'm gathering from your numbers with Superior Court with four fifty, I, I believe that would cover them completely. They would not have, um, and then with juvenile, that would leave them at around
Well, they're
Sorry, I'm
They're at one point four. I mean, not, not, not factoring in what you said about vacancies, but, I mean, so and, 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 and the clerk was at about a million.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
And I'm I'm okay with the I'm just gonna pop in and say that I'm okay with that, too.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion then. I move to um restore four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Superior Court budget, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Clerk's budget, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the juvenile court budget um from the, from the resources that were just outlined uh from the TC Connect and the non-departmental. Second, any discussion on that motion? And then I'll say that, that's still, like, I think Commissioner Fornier summarized it well, that's still leaves that opportunity with, with just slightly, well, significantly different numbers, but it still provides that opportunity if, if they want to uh get together and, and make shifts from there that they think are more aligned to the needs of the system that the commissioners aren't seeing. That would give them that opportunity. I, I, that doesn't
The email went out this morning, I think, Amy, and there probably, some people haven't read it yet, but
Okay.
Uh, hopefully. Yeah, I mean, this is just, this is the preliminary budget. This is not the final budget.
Yep.
Things are still in flux.
Okay, any other discussion? Call for the vote. On favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries unanimously. Okay, so those are upfront items. We have then our spreadsheets here that we're kind of moving into that discussion. You know, I have a few questions. I'm sure other commissioners do. I'll give you guys the floor.
Wonderful. Um, the presentation we had today is very similar to the one that we showed last week. And so I'll hand over to Summer and walk us through, and of course, uh, commissioners, anytime, please, um, engage with questions.
Thank you. Good morning. Um, Summer Miller, Budget Finance Manager in the Commissioners' Office. Um, we sent uh late last night an update to the errata list. Um, there have been no changes to the other um sheets that were distributed previously on recommend fund or recommend to adopt. Um. Have to go over those in detail. So this is our um final preliminary review of the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget development. Um, again, per board direction on July twenty-second, uh, no new funding or no new policy funding or additions, positions or reclasses with an additional general fund impact uh have been considered in this package. Uh, the recommended to fund or recommended to adopt items listed are compiled with this and other board direction of known assumptions and mandates considered. There we go. Um, so we have provided you the budget recommendations for general fund. Um, they're all listed here, and it's on two pages, sorry. This remote is not working.
Just tell me when you want me to move forward.
Please move forward. Thank you. Uh, all other funds um that are recommended to fund, can you move forward, please? And then all other funds continued, one more, please, and then uh continued again. Thank you. I think we've toggled back and forth. There we go. And then the capital requests as they were submitted. And then the list of errata. So in the presentation, we left it um I believe, maybe Amy added the slide for us. So we added um on the errata list at the last presentation to the board. Uh, it was numbered through number twenty. We added, I'm sorry.
What number?
Through twenty on your errata list. So if you look down the left-hand side, they're numbered.
Yep.
You were provided information previously. It was numbered through twenty. Everything after twenty, we added um since last week. Um, we captured uh internal service rates. We captured um the general fund reduction targets. You'll see that those are just listed by the office uh or department, um, and the amounts that were provided um as of last week. So we can make changes to that based on today's decisions. Um, we did um the requested changes to the non-departmental or county-wide services contracts. That's reflected. We also um made some adjustments to the human resources COLA placeholders to reduce the non-represented staff and added two line items for um represented. And then again, non-represented for some of those members who are required through ordinance or resolution to receive uh an equivalent COLA. Um, and then we removed the um a PAO position um in meeting with staff um in the PAO's office yesterday to uh plan out meeting their reduction target. There was a uh position that was offered up. Um, we also removed some positions in pre-trial services um that were not to be recommended. We shifted some positions at the request of the Sheriff's Office from general fund to public safety sales tax. Um, and then we made a correction to um the auditor's election supervisor position that had revenue backing. There was um, it was a, an error not caught by myself in the notation. Basically, just a spreadsheet carry forward on words. So I backed out the not backed by revenue and the cost plan notation and moved it on to this list. So those are the only major changes.
So I had, um, if I could start, uh, the, I had a question about, there were two two election-connected positions that the auditor brought to my attention. One of them, it sounds like you've, you've worked through. And the other one was a project position, which I think the um, you would, you were, as I understood it from checking in with you this morning, there was uh, a a suggestion that that's revenue back, and you had asked for some follow-up from the Ora's office, and you haven't received in, in, information that you need to make that change?
I did request the information, yeah, a couple of times yesterday, um, and as of, I haven't checked email since about eight-thirty this morning. So I, I don't know if I've received anything, but as of yesterday evening, I haven't received anything.
Could we make a motion to, um, just a procedural question, could we make a motion to have that uh position funded, provided the auditor provides you with the necessary revenue information by the end of the week?
Yes, sir. Yes, I will be happy to make the adjustment if that information comes in, yes.
Okay, is that a motion that, Commissioner Grant, go ahead?
Uh, well, I'll let you finish and then ask, mine's a different question, so.
Okay, uh, on that point, uh, I guess I'll look to my seatmates, uh, if I made that, Commissioner Claus.
Uh, well, it looked like the auditor said something. I didn't know if you were saying that you did send the email.
Um, I didn't see the email until late last night. I had a presentation. I got the email about five thirty-nine. Um, you should have it in your email, your box now. There were two project positions, which we do every midterm and presidential year, so we don't have to increase full-time staff, and we don't need them in odd years.
There's only one project position on the
We'll look at the auditor's email, and um if both of them are backed by revenue, I'm absolutely happy to add.
Do we need to address this today or?
Well, yes, I need
Make that motion?
I do want you to make that motion, ending uh the auditor's. Sounds like she got the email in.
Sounds like my motion's still valid.
Yep.
The basic information's already in there. So my motion's gonna be to find election project positions um provided the, the appropriate information regarding the revenue, supporting revenue is provided to the Commissioners' Budget Office by the end of the week.
Second up.
Any discussion on this motion? See a thumbs up from Commissioner Grant. I'll call for the vote. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, um. From board members, Commissioner Grant, you were next.
Yeah, um, I, I have a couple, uh, I guess procedural questions about this. Um, so are, is this kind of what we're gonna do right now is go through? And if there are things that we want to have changed, we're gonna suggest a motion? Is that kind of what the plan is here?
So, yeah.
Okay, um, well, I just have, before we do that, I have a couple of questions. Um, uh, and I have reviewed all of the, all of the documents that were sent last night and some I, I woke up early, early and went through all of this this morning. Um, just a quick question for Summer on, on the errata list. Uh, so the treatment sales tax positions, the two pre-trial positions that are showing right in the middle of page forty-six and forty-seven, well, wait a minute, I have
Lines forty-seven and forty-eight, I think.
Yeah, forty-seven and forty-eight. Yes, thanks, sorry. I was looking at the wrong, um, uh, uh, are those, so those were suggested not to fund by staff?
We, I had a communication with Carrie that um it potentially should have been on not recommended the fund, given the sales tax performance in that particular fund. So we shifted it over on the errata to not recommend the fund, to take it off the recommended to fund list.
And, and, okay, and that came from the Treatment Sales Tax Advisory Committee or? We know, or?
Information, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, okay, well, and I guess I, I, I do have a question about that, because I, um, you know, I understand that if we are sales, I mean, I'm just gonna bring this up to my seatmates here that um that, you know, some of these positions could potentially be funded by um, other, maybe other fund sources if we, if we had to figure something like that out, but I have real concerns about those two positions being, being cut, so. I don't know if I if there's a suggestion that we could fund it with some other funding or or ideas, but I'm asking my seatmates if, if anyone else has concerns about those positions. Those are currently funded positions, correct?
No, those are requests for new positions.
Oh, they're a request for new positions.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we don't have a resource hub here, support specialists.
Okay, okay, so I'm sorry, I thought we were removing next year's position, so that's why I was like, okay, so these are, these are requests that came from from Treatment Sales Tax and they're saying we can hold off and wait.
Yeah.
Right, oh, okay, all right, thank you. That's, I just want to make sure.
The context is departments, offices putting the requests in and based on the direction the board provided, but if there's not general fund revenue reported, it can be a negative impact in general fund, and that's for the recommendation not to fill. We're hoping budget times get better. Departments and offices will be engaged with, with positions that they may not have funding for today, but we could have funding for in future years.
Commissioner Mihia was next.
Well, no, that would be my clarification question. Like, are these new positions or?
Okay. Um, and then I, I know previously Commissioner Mihia had asked about some of the assessments for inter-agency, like regional collaboration, and those, those get addressed?
Those are all addressed in the countywide services, AKA non-departmental.
Okay, I just want to make sure. That was her notes from my previous, our previous run through this. Other questions, concerns? Let's stop. Give it a little time. At the point that we just, since people are thinking, I'll ask a process question. The mode, the proposed motion, since we've made a couple of, I don't know, did we really make, I guess we did make a change with the election position. I, so the motion would need to sort of be amended to say with the, with the amendments approved this morning, something like that, okay, yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
So for the elections positions that we just made the decision on, which line items are those on the?
Yeah, it's line item, so the election project position is sixty-two. Auditor Hall saying there's two of them. Worked that out, but the one I was focused on was line sixty-two.
Okay, what about lines? See, which one is it, fifty-nine?
Fifty-nine was the one I talked about it upfront, has already been taken care of.
Okay.
Yeah, ten is on the errata list. For funding.
I, I have another clarifying question, just, it's just, just for me and, and, you know, sorry, I probably would have asked this of Summer in the office if I would have been there, but just quickly, when I was looking through things. For example, I saw, I'm trying to get to my file here. So on the all other funds recommend, all other funds not recommend to fund on the final list, there's like the provide methadone in Thurston County Jail. And I'm just wondering, Summer, I noticed that it it goes from, or on the errata list, it goes from general fund to the opioid fund. It's listed as like moving from, from general fund to the opioid fund, and I'm just wondering if you could explain that. I, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm confused because I would think that it would go from the opioid fund to the general fund.
The board made a decision, and I don't have my calendar of dates to shift the one million dollar placeholder in the general fund to the opioid settlement fund in order to pay for settlement costs and some funding for public health and social service.
That was part of the decisions we made.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I know, I remember, I remember that. I guess it just confused me because of the way that it was listed on this, it, it the way that it was being moved was flipped around in my mind, but I guess I'm I'm following, yeah.
It's a general, it was gonna be a general fund impact, and now she's shifting it over so that it's going to be.
Okay.
It's not funds, it's shifting a placeholder that says we need to put money here.
Yeah, it's important to note that the budget cycle for the budget development, the window, I think, was only two or three weeks, right? And so once that window is closed, these, these requests were submitted before the majority of the board's decisions were made. So we have to leave them on the report in the system as it is because those are entered at a specific stage. When that stage gets closed down, we can't reopen it to make edits. So the errata list is capturing all of the changes that the board has directed in the best way that we possibly can, because we are not going to be able to go back in time and change their requests as they were entered. Now, as we continue developing the budget and we open up in a later stage in the budget development process, then we can edit according to the decisions today.
Okay, that helps me. Thank you. That was what I was trying to get clarified in my head. I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome. Anything else or? Motion?
I move to approve the preliminary twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven biennial budget and direct staff to build the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven biennial budget for board consideration on December twenty, December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five, as presented this morning with the, the amendments that were made assumed.
Okay, motion is second to approve these preliminary. Discussion on the motion.
I have a suggestion. I don't know if this is the right time, but I do have a couple of suggestions. I would, I kind of want to talk with staff about them, but one that I feel comfortable kind of asking here, which I don't know if we have the information available, but the there are a couple of domestic violence facilitator positions and I'm not sure if it would be appropriate, and these are in the clerk's office, and I don't know if it would be appropriate to shift those expenditures to public health, if that's even a possibility. I don't know if there are any healthy enough funds in public health to do that. But I think that that position is tied to public health. There's a direct connection, so I don't know that's a possibility to explore.
Absolutely. Ex- explore that. And there's public health's budget is pretty tight and they've had to do their own layoffs. Part of the TST conversation, they used a lot of additional funding in the village to, to plug some holes, so I don't know that they're sitting on a bunch of expendable funding, but happy to explore and have a conversation with our public health director offline.
Just backing that up, generally, I would say public health budgets are stretched.
Commissioner Grant?
Well, and I, I had that, I actually flagged those two positions myself because I have concerns, you know, there's two positions listed there. My, my question, or I just want to raise this as a, something is, you know, wouldn't those both qualify for uh, public safety tax, sales tax? I mean, could that? I think, I think that'd be something worth exploring. I mean, both are touching the system in a way that seem to be, or could be under the new point, you know, zero point one percent twenty-fifteen funding that we are considering. Just possible things for those.
Where are those positions at here?
Oh, geez, I wouldn't be able to tell you which page they're on in here.
I'll find them, just a sec.
Okay.
So I can track where you guys are timing.
I'll say for the public safety sales tax, those are directly allocated and it's, it's very stringent just based on the voters. Yeah, the resolution and the voter approval on the uses they can, you know, it was for certain percentage for law enforcement, and then the other one was for public defense and for prosecutor. And election security, so.
Yeah.
Shifting it to, to that one is not you know I wouldn't be possible just because of the resolution that is put in place. With twenty-fifteen, that is how we got to to that point of an additional seven point five that we were able to distribute, or, you know, around our criminal justice partners early on.
Already gonna count it for.
Yeah, fully, which is how we
Yep.
shrink the budget cap.
My only comment on this motion is that, you know, this is a quasi-balanced budget. It might get us, get us moving forward, but the next time we sit down and talk about budgets again, we're probably gonna be looking at cutting fifteen million dollars out of the budget again, and everybody needs to be preparing themselves for that. This is not, we're not solving our problems here. We're we're solving a few or making a little better, but we're gonna be back at this table again, having to have discussions about budget cuts.
Uh, as far as the motion goes, I mean, Commissioner Claus here, I think your issue may be able to be handled in a separate fashion. Is there any discussion on the motion that's pending?
No, uh, okay, so what, there was one, I'm sorry, I just, I just found one more thing that I just wanted to be able to talk about before we pass this motion that was on, sorry, and I, I have not found those positions, but there, there was one thing on the do not fund list that uh, under policy requests. And it was under the final total list, general fund recommend not to fund under the prosecuting attorney's office. Hold on, it's no, under Superior Court, add involuntary treatment FTEs.
I highlighted that as well.
So I, what, okay, and the reason that I'm bringing this up, so that's line sixty-nine. Uh, I'm bringing this up is because that funding is specifically coming coming, isn't it? Is it not? And we know that that money is coming, that we were, we, we asked for it and that it's coming from somewhere. I can't remember where, if it's coming down through Joe's office at TMBO or?
We built on a, we, we have a case, like, we used to bill costs and then we were, we were forced into a system where we, we have a per-case thing, and so that's why I highlighted that as well to ask question about because I think this dovetails with Commissioner Grant's question. Understanding that if Superior Court's saying that additional staffing is needed to handle the the
Yeah.
The cases, I mean, but the case, the cases made, like, okay, the payment is on a per-case basis. Now, I, I wasn't sure, that's why I didn't, I meant to ask a question about this.
I, I know what, I know what I was gonna say is, is that that rate was adjusted and is going up this year. That per-case basis rate was something that we, and maybe Carolina, you can jump in on this, I, I, but but, you know, each of those, we bill, we bill back different, different counties for the involuntary treatment, like, if we, if we see somebody who's from Addo County, then then we bill that out and that rate is going up, and so I'm just saying that there will be additional revenue coming in for those, and so I'm worried about us not funding the, because I know the, the, the need is there for involuntary treatment act. We've talked about how Maple Lane is going to be increasing and there's going to be more ITAs and there's gonna be a need for more courtroom, all of that discussion and that just, that's why I flagged this.
I think the question boils down to is, are those revenue-backed? I had this, I highlighted it, fast, the same question, so I'm gonna go to Summer.
Well, to answer that question, it wasn't entered by the office as revenue-backed, and to address Commissioner Grant's statement, the per-case filing for twenty-twenty-five has gone up, however, the total amount of the contract for this year has gone down. So if you remember, I presented, I think it was last week on the agenda setting, and it was, I think, adopted yesterday that the contract for twenty-twenty-five is one point three five million, and last year's contract was one point nine million. So it's gone down.
That has to be based on what, an estimate of cases or?
It's on a rolling average, so we get a report out, I received a report out from uh, the PAO, Public Defense, Superior Court, I believe the clerk. And it was the case filings for twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-four, and there is a, a calculation methodology, if you will, that calculates what the per-case filing amount is, and then it takes an average over that rolling period and then calculates what the maximum amount of the contract is. Now, the one change this year is we're not waiting three years anymore. We've committed with Joe Avalos and his team to review the contract costs annually.
Okay. This is something that can be worked on from now until December, and then, and in December, we can, that way, we can coordinate with Joe uh, and with Superior Court and kind of get information on, on the revenue back in question.
Yeah, if there's a way to, if there's a need and, and revenue to support, then I would like to get that sorted through.
Yep, and we would be supportive if, if that all adds up, so we'll work, definitely work with our partners in Superior Court and the BHSO Budget Office.
I'm. Thank you.
Um, I have a question about line sixty-eight uh, on the regimen not to fund the restored jury service and professional service reductions. Could anyone speak to that a little bit and explain why that one's not being recommended to fund? Is that a new request or?
It was a, as I understand it, it was an item, I'm looking, uh, it was an item that had been removed in previous budget cuts. It was a request to have it restored. Um, there's no funding behind it. So it would be an opportunity for Superior Court in looking at the dollars at the board that's restored today, if they could, they could take a look at if that's something they're, they're supportive of. I think they would need time to, to work that out because they just heard the information that came today.
Okay.
If we had additional funding and these are better times, that is something that we would partner with Superior Court in supporting. Because it was something they'd lost in previous times, that is an impact. There's just no revenue right now.
Okay.
Call for the vote on this item. Uh, there is a motion pending to approve the preliminary budget with the changes that have been made this morning. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you pause?
Aye, sorry, I'm slow.
Okay, so that motion passes. Commissioner, items? All right, we're adjourned.